Good evening, Chair. Calls to order legislative session day 22-020. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Wagner.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings upon this council and all those who are assembled here this evening. We as a council seek your wisdom that our actions would reflect lawful integrity, guide each of us, watch over the citizens of our county, keep them safe as we begin this summer season. In your name we ask these things. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you.
Counsel, before we get started, I want to take a minute and recognize Delegate Teresa Riley in the audience with us this evening, and also Councilwoman Lambek. Counsel, may I have general consent to skip over item five on the agenda and return to the completion of item 12 on the agenda? Thank you. Agenda item number six, special presentations, Harford County, James V. Katton-McMahon, Commissioner on Veterans Affairs, annual report. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to see you.
Good evening, sir. A pleasure to see you and the opportunity to, kind of council members, to give you our annual report this year. We have it up and ready to go here in just a second.
Very good.
And with me is Lisa Brown, our secretary, according to secretary.
Please.
And is my sound okay for all of you?
Yes.
Great. To start off with, this year was kind of a different year, a bridge year, because of the pandemic. We weren't able to do everything that we really wanted to do. However, we did some things that we hadn't planned on doing, so it was good that way. We started off this year in a, with our meetings online using MS Teams, and then switched in October, so we were able to go and have those in person. Shown is the agenda that I intend on following. There's a lot more inside of the report, and I think you all should have a copy of the report, goes a little bit more depth. Start off with our mission and vision. And at the beginning of our meetings, we do read our mission and vision. We talk about this, because the mission really comes down to our what. That is what we are focused on. And then the vision is the why. Why do we exist? Why are we there? So we show these, we talk about this, advocating for our veterans. And then we want to be responsive to those needs, and how do we do that? What's the how? Then that's what our members are charged with doing, is the how. The duties and responsibilities are laid out within the bylaws and go over basically four areas, the research, assembly, analyze, as it says, meeting the needs of veterans or families, and also to conduct educational and provide educational opportunities and programs. And that's important, because with the VA and with local and state, a lot of this changes. It changes quite frequently. So what we do is go out and ensure that we are educated ourselves, so that we can educate veterans, and that's really what we're all about. In addition to that is to advising the county council and county executive to some of those changes. For example, there's one change that kind of went a little bit under the radar right now, but the Department of Veterans Affairs is conducting a study, and what they're looking at is the usability of the different facilities. One of those is Perry Point. So is Perry Point going to continue to be a place where people go for routine? Or is that going to become more of a long-term care facility? And right now, they're looking at perhaps that will be a long-term care facility. What does that mean for Harford County? Well, for Harford County, that means that we would have a community-based, an outbase clinic here, similar to what they have other places. So that would change the dynamics of healthcare. Also would mean, what are we doing with the local, the Upper Chesapeake, things like that? That also would impact in there. So those types of things that we bring to attention of the county executive would have an impact on Harford County. We want to make sure that we do that. The other thing is that we do is planning the appropriate acknowledgement, contributions of veterans, and through that, do different events that we have. Our membership, to start off with, of course, Councilman Johnson is our liaison and our advisor throughout all of our meetings, provides us guidance. A couple of changes that we've had over the past year, like to highlight is our Simon Ballard took the place of Colonel Bob Appleby, who, he has two homes now, one's in Rhode Island, couldn't quite spend as much time as he had planned to on the Veterans Commission. We also have Barbara Travers recently, and her name will come up before you, probably in the fall, as the new Harford Community College rep. Janice Cassidy retired from HCC, so Barbara's taken the place. And the last, and by no means the least, is Colonel Johnny Cassiano. He took the place of Colonel Tim Drohl, who you remember, very active, and Colonel Cassiano, extremely active. You've probably seen him in a lot of different things. What he does is he provides that link between the Harford County Veterans and APG. And he's at our meetings, asking how we can make that link, what we can do, and we're exchanging information. Along with him, he also normally brings his PAO. So we are able to use his websites, things like that, for our different events, and vice versa, to go back and forth. So our membership, very active in what we do. I'd like to do now is just kind of highlight some of the different activities, and the one we'll start off with is the Veterans Resource Fair. We're very happy to be able to hold that this year. It was, we call it a hybrid event. With that, well, the theme was Veterans Mental Health from Awareness to Action. So what we did was kind of, I'd say, slimmed down, cut down a little bit the number of, we call vendors or the organizations that are there, and concentrate on benefits, to concentrate on healthcare. We also had, for those people who did not want to come inside, there was a drive-by. We worked with the Maryland Department of Health and the Maryland, State of Maryland VA Department of Outreach, and they put together some goodie bags for us, information inside of our goodie bags. And then working with Cindy Mumbi and her excellent crew, they put those bags together. So we had several hundred bags put together, and we had just about 350 people come through. So it was, even though we cut it down a little bit, there were still a lot of people that went all the way through. In addition to that, we did have the photo gallery. In the center there is, with Councilman Johnson, is Command Sergeant Major Asmussen. He is a World War II, a Korean War, and a Vietnam War vet, still very active, says he swims every day. And it was great to see people come out from all different generations to take advantage of what we have to offer. In addition, this year, a little bit different, that we had, we partnered with the Susquehanna Chapter of the Military Officer Association of America for a what is a veteran contest. And what they put that on, and what that was all about was there were poster contests for the younger kids, the younger kids, and then for the high school, they did an essay. And awards were given out by the Commanding General of APG, as well as Mr. Glassman and the MOA. So that was kind of a good thing there, to involve not only just the adult, and also some of the kids, and bring them all. That was really a fantastic thing that we had there. And there was still a raffle from the APG Federal Credit Union that we were able to Other items that we have is the Reef Across America, I think I saw a survey there at that mobile event, that was great. And then the very moving, that event was very, very moving in the Reef Lane afterwards. Our Memorial Day ceremonies recently that we just put on with the Reef Lane, Bel Air Fourth of July Parade last year, also this year, we plan on participating as well. Aberdeen Retiree Appreciation Day, back in person this year. We were very glad to be there to hand out information, provide information, and learn from the retirees who attended that at APG. We also helped out with the Veterans County Employees Veterans Breakfast. And throughout our meetings, we do have guest speakers that come in, again, help us, educate us, and let us know kind of what's going on within the different realm of veterans, what can be done. There was also APG Military Appreciation Event, Sergeant Alfred B. Hilton Breakfast, and a Darlington Lions Club presentation. So there were a lot of different events that were going on during the year, both in person and virtually. The next is a little bit, is something I mentioned last year, it was just starting off, but I like to emphasize it now, because it's really growing, and it needs to grow. The first is the Maryland VA Governor's Challenge to Prevent Suicide Among Service Members, Veterans, and Their Families. We are on that working committee right now. What we are doing, one of the things, the work group, in fact, that I'm on is called, is looking at Ask the Question, because a lot of times, what we find is when people go out and ask that, and say, are you a veteran? The reply that we get is, no, I'm not. But if you ask that question, have you or your family member ever served in the military or ever served in National Guard or the reserves? The answer a lot of times is different. They say, well, yes, I have. And a follow-up question there then is, are you receiving all the benefits that you deserve? So that kind of opens the door to get people in and to help people out, which maybe not have been reached before. So that's something that's going on across the state at the, again, governor's level. The next is the Crisis Intercept Mapping Project. We started that about a year ago, and with the, and that is kind of grown right now. We're looking at, again, along with Ask the Question, but we're looking at how are there, when someone identifies or someone has an issue with the suicide awareness of veterans, what happens next? What are those next steps that are taken there? And that's what this project is looked at. We were, Harford County was in the forefront, we were the ones selected, again, by the Maryland, Maryland State to participate in this, and so it's growing and working with several different agencies within the county. The Harford County Veterans Collaboratives. The Harford County Collaboratives are held quarterly, and these are open to any veterans or any, really anyone at all that wants to join in. And there are specific topics of interest, such as education, veterans' benefits, and mental health. The first one, and I'm not quite sure how we got this, and we work with the Harford County Department of Community Services on this, they were able to get SEAL Lieutenant Jason Redmond, and he's a worldwide-known author, to come in and talk about his journey, his journey from being severely injured and where he is at now. So that was great to have him on. And again, this was virtual. And then we have other meetings that go on with the veteran stakeholder to get information from the VA. And recently, there was a Women's Veterans Virtual Conference, and Denise Perry, shown here, she was one of the speakers that we had from the Veterans Commission, talking about different, the way that we approach help to women veterans. Assistance requests, I won't read this whole list up here, but you can see these are, I'd say they're run-of-the-mill, but in many ways, they're not, because what we're finding is there are a lot of requests for benefits, but what we find, when we ask that benefits and dig deep within there, we find the reason sometimes people need benefits is that maybe they're being, they don't have the money for rent, or they're losing their house, or they don't have food. So there's, when we look at that, we look at it not just in terms of what is that one issue, but what else can we do? And that's where we involve other people within the county, within the state, and at the federal level, to help out at that point. Also COVID-19 vaccine information, we put that out, rental assistance. There's a lot that can be done. We're not direct service providers. I mean, we can't do that illegally, we can't do that, but we have the connections that can put that veteran and the veteran's families in touch with those people that can get the job done. And that's, I think, where we really stand out in that ability. So how do people reach us? Well, several different ways, communication, Facebook, and I'll just point out, Art Caff back there runs our Facebook and runs our social media, fantastic job. We get something in, in fact, this afternoon, I had something in on a project opportunity, and boom, it was up, it was up broadway. Art really helps us out that way. Things come into the commission website, through Councilman Johnson's office, and Ryan Cook, he provides those to us, so we can quickly jump on top of whatever requests come in and provide help. The upcoming projects for 2022, the first one, I would really like to highlight, this is, I consider this a win, a very, a big win for Harford County. This is the Benefits and Health Clinic at Harford Community College. This was just recently announced. We were looking to kick this off right before COVID came out, and of course, that put the end to that. What this is, is it's just concentrated on healthcare and on benefits, where it's by invitation, not invitation only, but by registration only, rather, where veterans can sign up from approximately nine, it's about nine to three o'clock into, and it's going to be at the Harford Community College, as it says. And they can take a veteran with absolutely, who's never submitted a claim before, can take that all the way from that beginning claim until it's already put in. Someone who has a claim that's partly adjudicated, they can get that. Someone who has all the way through and wants to check on the status can do that. So they're being registered beforehand. This is put on by the Veterans Alliance, which is primarily with the state VA, VA Maryland Healthcare System, and some VSOs. So they do a lot of the, really, the heavy lifting, but they need to partner with the county. We said that we would do this, I guess Carroll County was the first one to do it last month. We will be the second one. There were a lot of counties that wanted to do this, and that's why I'm glad we were selected for that, again, because we have been providing a lot of help with the VA. So we're looking to kicking this off on September 7th, should be a great day. The Veterans Resource Fair, again, that will come off in November 12th. And our Fourth of July Parade, Veterans Day Parades, and the Reef Across America. And we have our Save the Date flyer that we just put up. What I've done is, hopefully, has given you kind of a highlight of some of the different events that we are doing, some of the things that we plan on doing, some of the results, and why we do it. Again, our members go out into the community, we're very happy to do that. We look forward to receiving those requests, and we look forward to serving all of you. And thank you all very much for the support that you have given us during the past year. So subject to your questions, that concludes the presentation.
Robert, let me thank you for your in-depth annual update, and for your dedication and commitment to the servicemen and women, our veterans across the county. We really appreciate that. And with that, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Chair Brown and Secretary Brown, good evening. I just have one question, and it's mainly for the record, okay? So I know my thoughts and your thoughts on veterans' courts, and I just want it on the record. So what are your thoughts for veterans' courts, since we have 19,000 veterans here in Harford County?
Councilman Johnson, that's a good, a very good, a good question. I think we've kicked that around. I am in favor of the veterans' courts, and for those, I think everyone is kind of familiar with the veterans' courts, if I could just briefly talk about those a little bit. A lot of times, when a veteran comes before a court, there are other extenuating circumstances. Not that this should be shoved aside or anything else, but there are things that can be done to help that veteran out. The example that I was given from the state's attorney a while back was a veteran who was, again, completely wrong, 80 miles an hour down the road. Well, what do you do? You throw him in jail. But is that going to do him any good? No. But what the veterans' court does is it says, okay, if you come before this court, this is what we're going to do. First, you have to say yes, and work with the VA, and work with USO, assign him a counselor, him or her a counselor, and they get into a program that looks at the why behind all that. If they could say, nope, sorry, just whatever you want to do to me, do to me, but it's a little bit separate. I know we've said that, you know, it's, there's not that many veterans, or there's not that many cases, but if there's one person that would get in that, and one person that, you know, as we see the mental health rates and the suicide rates and everything else, one person that we can help, you know, I think it's worth looking into. Other counties, I think we have four other counties right now, Baltimore City did it. And the VA, I contacted Deputy Director down there, and he said, we're ready. If Harford County is ready, we will come up, we will meet, we will get that team together. We are ready. We're ready to help you out. Just let us know.
So I just want to say that it's an honor and a privilege to serve on the Veterans Commission, especially under you all's leadership. And, you know, I tell you that when calls come into my office or emails come into my office, I send them over to the Veterans Commission, and you all just jump right on them. So I truly appreciate all that everyone does on the Veterans Commission, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Gingerdano?
I heard you, good evening. I heard you mention something about the Perryville VA facility and changes or ongoing of what might happen with that. And I do know there is, especially, I know my father goes to the VA up there, I know it's a long ride, especially up there. Is that, and you said something that might turn into long-term care? Where would those people then go for their regular doctors, appointments, and treatments on that? Is that something that would be then moved somewhere into Harford County?
Yes, that would be the, what we call a CBOK, an outbase clinic. And where that would be, that would be where people would go for routine care. The idea is, they looked at it, called the AAR Commission, I forget exactly what it stands for. And again, this was, this would not be anything that's happening tomorrow. It's got to be approved by Congress, approved by the President, similar to BRAC, very, very similar to BRAC. And then looking at what is the best way for that facility. Now, again, that's not, I'm not saying this is something that's going to happen, but this is what they're looking at. Perry Point right now, as you all may know, is growing like crazy. I mean, it is, to go up there and to look at that, and the homes and everything, the homes that they put in there, and the way they have the step-up for people, fantastic facility. It's just that, is a better way, I think, the way it was worded, is it a better way to have people go where the center of the population is in Bel Air, or that, where they could be Edgewood or someplace else, into a clinic? Or to get up to Perry Point with the known transportation issues, you know, to get up to the Lincoln, everything goes up there, but is there a better way to do that? So that's what they're looking at. It's not just here, it's also all the way across the country. Are there better ways to serve veterans? It's not to take away veteran support, it's to, is there a better way to do that?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman Gingerdano. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, thank you again for your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes, public hearing June 14th, 2022, legislative day 22-019, June 14th, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda items eight, nine, and 10, we have no business this evening. 11, call for final reading of bills. Bill 22-011, zoning definitions Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Program, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Guess we'll turn that back on, huh? Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve Bill 22-011. Do you want to do them all the same, or?
No, I think we should do them individually.
Okay.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Been moved and seconded to approve Bill 22-011. Are there any comments? Mr. Gingerdano?
Thank you, Council President. I was here a couple weeks ago. I had some concerns about some of the areas that were, some of the streams that they were going to put in the critical area. I wanted some stronger, I guess, documentation on that. I reached out to Jenny Janikowski. She provided me with some information. It still wasn't enough, that I thought was sufficient. She did then provide maps, LiDAR, and everything, showing that the streams were not streams, especially in two areas, off of Philadelphia Road and Swan Creek, I think. The other two were, one was at Rock State Park. They definitely clarified the questions and concerns that I had with that. Felt like it was sufficiently answered to the best of their ability, and it really did actually make sense. I do appreciate her getting back to that, to me on that, and giving me all the detailed information. So just want to update everybody on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The only thing I would like to add is, along with that, we've had many conversations this past week, week and a half, with the Gunpowder Riverkeeper, Christian Kirkwood from Harford Land Trust. I spoke with Stephanie Flash, Friends of Harford, this morning, and I believe that with these support letters that we have from the Riverkeeper and the Land Trust, it went a long way to answer a lot of the concerns that some of the citizens had. So I appreciate not only their input and their time advocating for not only the citizens, but for all of us, but also Ms. Charkasie, I thought Planning and Zoning stepped up and responded quickly, thoroughly, and got us all the answers that we were looking for. One last time, counsel, anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Gingerdano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye. There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Bill 22-011 is hereby approved. Bill 22-012, adoption Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Program, Mr. Woods may have a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve Bill 22-012.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gingerdano. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill 22-012. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Gingerdano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye. There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Bill 22-012 is hereby approved. Bill 22-013, subdivision regs Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Program, may I have a motion, Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve Bill 22-013.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill 22-013. Any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Gingerdano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye. There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Bill 22-013 is hereby approved. Bill 22-014, accessory structures, Mr. Schroes?
Council President, I make a motion to approve Bill number 22-014.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Been moved and seconded to approve Bill 22-014. Are there any comments? Mr. Schroes?
Yes, simply put, this will allow the size of an accessory structure not to exceed 50% of the size of a dwelling.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Gingerdano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Bill 22-014 is hereby approved. Bill 22-015, revised prior year bond bills, may I have a motion, Mr. Wagner?
Move for the approval of Bill 22-015, revised prior year bond bills.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill 22-015. Are there any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Gingerdano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye. There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Bill 22-015 is hereby approved. Bill 22-016, bond authorization CPI, may I have a motion?
Move for the approval of Bill 22-016, bond authorization CPI.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill 22-016. Are there any comments? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Gingerdano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Bill 22-016 is hereby approved. Bill 22-017, bond authorization water and sewer, may I have a motion? Mr. Wagner?
Move for the approval of Bill 22-017, bond authorization water and sewer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. It's moved and seconded to approve Bill 22-017. Are there any comments? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schroes.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Bill 22-17, 017, is hereby approved. Bill 22-018, Police Accountability Board and Charging Committee, may I have a motion, Mr. Janjordano?
Mr. President, I move to approve the Police Accountability and Police Accountability Board and Charging Committee.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Removed and seconded to approve Bill 22-018. Is there any comments? Mr. Wagner.
I think it was said back at the time, we had it in front of us, a hearing, that none of us like it. It was something that's handed to us from the state, we've got to do it, and this is the best we can do. So, you know, the approval process, you don't, you don't have the option to opt out of it. So I appreciate the, you know, the people that will serve on that, and we'll make the best of it until something else happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. And again, we must have something in place by July 1st to replace the law enforcement officers' bill of rights. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schroes.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Bill 22-018 is hereby approved. Agenda item number 12, enrollment of bills. Bill 22-011, zoning definitions Chesapeake Bay critical area program. Bill 22-012, adoption Chesapeake Bay critical area program. Bill 22-013, subdivision regs Chesapeake Bay critical area program. Bill 22-014, accessory structure. Bill 22-015, revised prior year bond bills. Bill 22-016, bond authorization CPI. Bill 22-017, bond authorization water and sewer. And Bill 22-018, Police Accountability Board and Charging Committee are here certified as the text finally passed. Agenda item number five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Executive appointments, Police Accountability Board, Mr. Janjordano.
Council President, I move to approve the Police Accountability Board, executive appointments.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
You need to name.
Yes.
Need to name them all?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointments of the Chair, Mr. John Landbeck Jr. Members, Ms. Vicki Jones, John McCoy, Sean Jackson, and Allison Imhoff. Are there any discussion, or is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schroes.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the appointments are hereby approved. I see some familiar faces in the audience. If you would stand and please be recognized. Mr. Landbeck.
Is it somebody behind the pole?
Hello?
John.
Yes, John. Thank you all for serving.
Agenda item number 13, unfinished business, we have none. Agenda item number 14, new business.
Do we have to mention that too?
No. Agenda item number 14, new business, council, the amendment for the Zoning Board of Appeals' Rules of Procedure has been pulled. We're going to take it up at another date. And I will move to agenda item number 16, business from council members, and I'll start with Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be very brief tonight. I want to wish everyone a happy and safe summer season, and if I don't see you before the 4th, have happy 4th of July. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree. I hope everyone has a happy and safe summer, and be safe while you're traveling, and watch out for hurricane seasons right here, you know. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Janjordano?
Thank you, Council President. I want to echo Councilman Woods, even though sometimes you think a hurricane might not do any damage, please be prepared. I'm always worried about the storm coming up Chesapeake, even if it's just wind. So if you got a lot of rain, it certainly does some damage. Our office will be open all summer if you have any questions, calls, and I hope everybody has a safe summer and happy 4th of July. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Mr. Schroes?
Yes, just a few things. I did have the opportunity to present John Sowers, his Hartford Living Treasure proclamation at Delirium Dendron the other day. He's a well-known artist in the area and does so much for our community, especially the Hartford Artists Association and the Hartford County Historical Society, among others. Also, we had the opportunity to attend the passing of the gavel for the Hartford Chamber in which Mary Ann Bogarty became the new president, and it was passed from Lee Tason, and I want to thank him for all of his work that he's done throughout this past year. And then today, Ben Kurtz was voted as President of the Maryland State Firemen's Association, and Malia Dalton was voted as President of the Ladies Auxiliary of the Maryland State Firemen's Association. So just want to congratulate them. This is a, it's a very prestigious, and I don't know this has ever happened before where you have two members becoming President that are both from the same fire company of Jarrettsville, it happens to be. So congratulations to them. They have both done so much over the years to keep us all safe, and I wish them well in their positions representing the entire state. Also, please keep my dear friends, Jim and Janet Archer, just think about them. They lost their barn. You probably saw on the news, they're of Fawnview Manor Farms. And I especially want to thank our community and the firefighters that came out on Father's Day and basically spent the entire day putting out an amazing, huge blaze that caused $750,000 worth of damage. So think about them, and I know it's crazy, and it sounds like it's arson, so that's, that's what makes it crazy. So anyway, they're, they seem to be doing well. I did visit with them, and, you know, they'll get through this, and I just want to thank everyone that has helped them. And lastly, have a great summer and be safe. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Schroes. Mr. Wagner?
Last week, I think the majority of council members attended the graduation for Megan's Place at Hartford Community College. It was definitely a worthwhile program that put the families that did graduate on a, on a better path for their futures. And then on Thursday, or later that day, I attended a retirement for Joan Turbot, who celebrated 35 years of county employment with the Facilities Division, and just want to wish her well. And certainly wish everybody a happy and safe 4th of July and a happy and safe summer as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Want to let everyone know we will be hosting our Attic with Public Facilities meeting tomorrow evening, 6:00 p.m., second floor here in the council conference room. This past week, I had the honor and pleasure of handing Mr. Bruce England a proclamation recognizing him for his 37 years of service to the Saskatchewan Workforce Network, and they service businesses and employees both in the Hartford and Cecil County area. Also, I want to express our deepest condolences to the Northeast Volunteer Fire Company over the loss of one of their youngest volunteers. I believe he was 22 years old, was hit by a vehicle and killed last night or yesterday. And then personally, I want to express my deepest condolences to both the Petty and the Hamilton families. Sadly, yesterday, just after 2:00, Chris Hamilton lost her battle with cancer, 54 years old. So she's survived by her husband Jimmy, son Jamie, daughter Shelby, son-in-law Matt, who recently, they were just married, along with her several brothers and sisters, nieces and nephews. And Jeannie and I would ask you to keep the Hamilton and Petty families and friends in your thoughts and prayers, and hope you all have a great summer.
How about the Health Officer Search Committee?
How about that?
Yeah.
So I believe it is the 6th of July, we will be hosting our first official Health Officer Search Committee meeting here in the council chambers, and I forget the time. Sam, what time is it?
10:00.
10:00 o'clock, 10:00 a.m. And we will come together for the first time with the committee to look at a plan and path forward to work with HR, both at state level and county level, to advertise the position. Thank you, Mr. Kearney.
You're welcome.
Ms. Dixon. Agenda item number 17, comments and input from attending citizens. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. President, we have nine this evening.
With nine again, please be mindful of your time and call your first speaker.
Ken Shannon, followed by Paul Falachi.
Good evening. My name is Ken Shannon. I live at 2044 Park Beach Drive in Perryman. Speaking tonight to remind the council about how the Perryman community, except for one family, feels about illegal freight terminals being built in our neighborhood. We've been saying since the community input meeting on December 1st that we don't want more massive buildings and the pollution, noise, traffic, and disruption that comes with them. On January 4th, I said to the council that the proposed Mitchell property development is wrong because it will severely degrade the quality of life of Perryman residents for the months or years that this enormous construction project will take, which will be followed by constant congestion, traffic noise, and pollution. I said that this proposal is outrageous because the developer's site plan estimated that at the largest shift, there will be 2,910 employees. The revised site plan submitted by the developers on May 24th now shows that the largest shift is 2,389 people. That's still as many people as there are in the entire town of Perryman. On January 18th, I said to the council that Perryman already has 10.6 million square feet of warehouse space, that of the 21.2 million square feet of Hartford County warehouse space, only 21,000 of it is in communities that are north of I-95. Perryman has the highest poverty rate and the most warehouse square feet per person of any community in Hartford County. Perryman has the lowest median income and the most warehouse square feet per person. Communities with the highest median incomes, Bel Air, Forest Hill, Fallston, Churchville, have no large warehouses. On March 5th, I addressed the council to remind them that the Hartford County zoning code says on its first page that it is to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. The number and size of current mega warehouses and freight terminals on Perryman Peninsula is negatively impacting the health, safety, and welfare of the Perryman community. On March 15th, I testified on moratorium Bill 22-003, pointing out that on page one of the zoning code, it says that provisions of code shall not be interpreted so as to interfere with the use of a person's home with respect to those uses commonly associated with the enjoyment of the home. I expect that members of the Perryman community who live 100 feet away from the Mitchell Farm and the proposed 5.2 million square feet of freight terminals will not only have their enjoyment of their homes interfered with, they would be devastated by their proposed development. On April 12th, I talked to the council about property rights. I said that the Mitchells are not being prevented from selling their property. Their property rights are intact. Just as the Mitchells are entitled to their property rights, the people of Perryman want their property rights respected. I live in one of the 400 homes, they're on the other side of whatever ends up on the Mitchell Farm. I don't want it to be the half-mile-long warehouse as proposed, surrounded by four other mega warehouses. The project manager for the developers said multiple times during the SIM that the building of warehouses on the Mitchell property is permitted by the current zoning. I ask that the county council and the DAC not merely allow what is permitted in the proposed Mitchell property development, but that you all do what is right for Perryman, the Bush River, and the Chesapeake Bay. Listen to what Hartford County citizens are saying about this project, not what developers from Hanover are saying. Represent and protect the interests of Hartford County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Falachi, 320 Marina Avenue in Perryman. I was going to elaborate on one of the areas that Ken touched on, and it's the purpose of the Hartford County zoning code. In light of all the major development that's going on across the entire county, not only in Perryman, Aberdeen, Bel Air, off 9552, and all over the county, there's Major Plumtree Road and I-24. It seems like we're clearing farms and forests everywhere, and also Abingdon Woods. So Hartford County, Maryland zoning code, chapter 267 of the code, 267-3 is the purpose. The purpose of this zoning code is to promote the health, safety, morals, general welfare of the community by regulating the height, number of stories, size of the buildings, and other structures, the percentage of the lot that may be occupied, the size of the lots, yards, other open spaces, and other location and use of buildings, structure, and land for business, industrial, residential, and other purposes. The zoning code is enacted to support the master plan and design to control traffic, congestion on public roads, provide adequate light and air to promote the conservation of natural resources, including the preservation of productive agricultural land, to facilitate the construction of housing of different types to meet the needs of the county's present and future residents, to prevent environmental pollution, to avoid undue concentration of population and congestion, to facilitate adequate provisions of transportation, water, sewage, schools, recreation, parks, and other public facilities, to give reasonable consideration, among other things, to the character of each district and its suitability for particular uses, with a view to conserving the value of buildings and encouraging orderly development and most appropriate use of land throughout the county, to secure safely from fire, panic, and other danger, and to conserve the value of property. Directly from 267.3, the purpose of the Hartford County zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Limani Quaranting, followed by Ellen Shinelli.
I guess I'm not following anyone?
No, ma'am.
Hi, I am Ellen Shinelli. I live at 1704 Park Beach Drive in Perryman. This year is the fourth year that the Hartford County Department of Public Works is encouraging residents to get out and enjoy the natural beauty of Hartford County's streams. They call it Hartford Streams Summer Adventure. Enjoy nature, visit a stream, take a selfie, and share your experience on their website. This event showcases the beauty in Hartford County. If you follow 3P, Protect Perryman Peninsula, you may have seen some of my posts. What is not discussed is the health or lack of health of our county's streams. Polluted runoff is a major source of water pollution in Hartford County, especially the streams and rivers that flow through populated areas such as the Bush River and its tributaries. On the Hartford County Parks and Rec website, it clearly states that swimming is not permitted at Flying Point Park or Mariner Park due to the variations in water quality. Researchers from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation have concluded that when 2% to 10% of a stream or river's drainage area is covered in hardened surfaces, roads, roofs, parking lots, and other developed surfaces that rain cannot penetrate, fish and amphibians begin to disappear. In Maryland, suburban and urban runoff is responsible for polluting thousands of miles of waterways, leaving them legally impaired under the Federal Clean Water Act. Hartford County's Bynum Run-Bush Creek watershed, which is right here in Bel Air, is at least 9% covered in pavements, roofs, and other developed surfaces. Don't worry, though, because there's a plan. Hartford County Department of Public Works has developed watershed restoration plans that will improve the quality of impaired streams. If you read through the past 10 years of studies conducted on various county streams, you'll find that each assessment report includes an action plan for restoration. Shouldn't part of the plan include stopping further pollution of our watersheds? Dr. Baker Bush, the president of Otter Creek Point Alliance, has presented testimony at previous county council meetings. Her research and ongoing studies, she has determined that the development of Abingdon Woods will negatively impact Otter Creek. Why is this information not enough to stop the development of this critical area? Why is the outrage of the Perryman Peninsula community not enough to stop the mega warehouse development on 750 acres of pristine waterfront land? We, the community, the country, the world, needs to stop making mistakes and then cleaning up the mess. Protect Perryman Peninsula. Save Abingdon Woods. Preserve Hartford County's water. When voting, please vote for guardians of the county. Let's stop the destruction of our beautiful county.
Bring your comments to a close, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Pickering, followed by Leah Maddox.
They wanna, they wanna join. They want some time with the mic, too. Justin Pickering, 1605 Perryman Road in Aberdeen, Maryland. I just wanted to say thank you to Councilman Johnson specifically for your support of 3P and the Perryman Coalition over these past months. We've looked forward to getting to work with you and hope to continue to work with you even more in the future. A bit disappointed not to see Councilman Bueller here this evening, but understand if he had other commitments. Speaking of the warnings to heed hurricane season from Councilman Woods and Councilman Jan Giordano, climate change is real. Paving over pristine farmland, as my other community members have mentioned, is not going to help the problem. It's not going to make hurricanes any less frequent. It's gonna make them more frequent. And then when that water has nowhere to go but hard porous surfaces, including mega freight terminals and distribution centers, the rest of us are gonna be left holding the bag. I wanted to bring two of your youngest constituents from Hartford County, my two children, Jonah and Madeline. They're three and four. And to be honest, the land that we're fighting to protect and preserve is not for us. It's not for any of us in the room besides these little ones that we're trying to give a home and a future to. And I'm disappointed and ashamed that I've, in teaching them about the legislative, executive, and judicial branches of government, that we've been let down by, especially by the Hartford County Executive. And when you all had an opportunity to make a meaningful change and put the pause on development, that the legislative branch could not, could not pull that off either. I'm disappointed, but if I didn't have these two here, I wouldn't be hopeful. I'm hopeful that we can make change, and we plan to make change, and put a stop to development that doesn't benefit this county at all. So, with that, my son Jonah did wanna say something. Bud, you wanna say something? Here, say it into the microphone.
No more warehouses.
What'd you wanna say?
No more warehouses.
Please help us protect Perryman.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Leah Maddox, 1700 Church Point Court, Perryman, Maryland. So, I wanted to wish you all a happy summer. Good luck with your campaigning. We in 3P have been asked by many folks throughout the county what we think about the upcoming elections and if we have any recommendations. Beginning back in March, we started doing interviews of various candidates and some sitting elected officials. We talked to both sides of the aisle, if you will, including independents and libertarians. And as a result of that vetting process, we also gave tours of the peninsula of people, for people who would like to come and see exactly what we're talking about. And as a result of that vetting process, we put together a list of folks that we think are both viable and on the side of the people and the land in Perryman. So, please go to our website and check it out. And again, I wish you all a great summer.
Thank you, ma'am.
Charles Riley, followed by Ron Stucinski.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Charles Riley, 1911 Park Beach Drive in Perryman. First, I wanna say how disappointed I am with the county government as a whole and the way they've been treated in the Perryman community. But I'm really disheartened and disappointed in how Executive Glassman handled and ignored the voices of the Perryman community. Last I heard, and no, we are still citizens of Hartford County. But no, we were treated like an unwelcome threat to Hartford County. Seems to me, in the last several decades or so, the county government has been more interested in developers than its citizens. I thought we were here and put, I thought you were here and put in office to protect the citizens of Hartford County. The building in this county needs to stop for many reasons. The main reason and most glaring reason is in front of us every day, our infrastructure. And this county is absolutely awful, decades behind, extremely dangerous. The roads from 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM every day around the county has high and extremely dangerous volumes of traffic. Examples, Route 152 between 95 and Route 1, Route 22 between Bel Air and Aberdeen, Route 543 in the Route 7 corridor, Bel Air road bypassed by itself, Route 24 between 95 and Bel Air. I can go on and on. When is enough enough? I had a high-ranking official from the state and county tell me eight years ago, quote, "Chip, in this county, we are 20 to 25 years behind on our roads and infrastructure. But as we all can see, traffic in this county seems to continue to get worse." The county continues to build and add major development projects, but the roads and infrastructure continues to stay the same. Yeah, the county and statewide areas like Route 22, but in the end, it still jams up, constantly putting Band-Aids on problems. In the past three years, I've had eight friends and family members leave Hartford County, all lifelong residents of the county. All of said, it's gotten too crazy and congested. Seems to me, and many, that the county government doesn't care about the people who already reside and have been lifelong residents. Seems to me, and most residents, all the county cares about is the almighty buck. One last thing. The county approves to put houses, shops, and restaurants right along the 95 corridors and exits in Hartford County, but puts distribution centers, warehouses, and industries in the middle of communities. Who in the hell is doing the community or county's development and planning? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
The last speaker this evening is Tanya Tayo.
Yeah, it's after you. She already called you there, right?
Can I go?
Tanya? You don't look like Tanya.
I think I've done that to you before. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I get it. I know. I can understand it. It won't be that bad, I promise.
Not on purpose, I promise.
It's fine. I got six minutes. Ron Stucinski, 319 Marina Avenue. Six months ago, December of 2021, I attended my first council meeting. Previously, I pretty much had no idea who any of you were or what values you represent. Today, I can't help but see how the local system of Hartford County has many politicians doing what's best for their own interests and not for the citizens. Our community came to you with grave concerns regarding our everyday lives in the Perryman Peninsula, traffic, pollution, water, home values, health and safety, just to name a few. At the same time, the Mitchell Project crew was busy posting phony ads, sending out false mailers, illegally spamming Hartford County residents, threatening council members. And even showed up one meeting with six of their workers to hold signs, which was called pathetic by our council president. They had zero outside support other than themselves as we presented over nine, over 1,000 emails, signatures, and speeches against this project, yet here we are. Once again, I'll remind everyone of some of the words from our councilman, Mr. Bueller, 161 days ago, almost half a year. I wish he was here to hear this, but I guess he's working with the council attorney to get things straightened out. What we don't need more of on the Perryman Peninsula is warehouses. Quote, "Two, needs to be safe for citizens and not a negative impact on their quality of life." Three, I've represented District F for seven years. Perryman, of course, is a part of that district. I've gotten more traffic complaints from Perryman residents than all the rest of my district by far. As an elected officer, we're charged with upholding the county code and the county charter. Ultimately, both are based on the health, safety, and well-being of our citizens. What we need to do is put our citizens first, in my favorite quote. "Anybody with common sense can tell you that Perryman can't handle the traffic it already has." Well, the educated is, so 3P know this. I'm hoping you're starting to figure it out. So, I was going to ask him for my third straight meeting, if he has any answers for us yet or what he's done, but I guess he's busy. Four months ago, I started talking about the 90,000, almost one-third of our county, that gets their water from the Perryman wellheads. Have anybody yet figured out what 30% of residents do? Or have they been notified of the possible dangers and contamination this project could present? Elections are coming, and it's been heard that Perryman voters don't matter, or I have enough votes to not need them. I will tell you now, 3P and its core followers will have a huge factor in this upcoming election. This includes you, Barry, Mr. Glassman, that has avoided myself, our residents, and the Perryman Peninsula for six months. You've canceled fundraisers. You sent others in your place to do ribbon cuttings with fear we would show up. Why? You were elected to work for us. What are you afraid of? Possibly losing these paying contributions down the road? This is from me, not representative of the rest of 3P. You're a coward. Our fate, fight to save our community and other parts of our great county is full steam ahead. We will not stop the teal train until we get to our final destination. I encourage residents of the county to join us, www.ProtectPerrymen.com. Thank you all for your support. Have a nice summer.
Tanya, or is it Tanya Tayo? There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no other speakers, this meeting will be adjourned.